Good morning, everyone. Call to order this committee of the whole meeting of the Thompson Nicola Regional District for Friday, June the 27th, 2025, almost halfway through the year. TNRD acknowledges we connect with many First Nations communities across our vast regional district, and today we are located on the Takumloops to Shakemek territory, situated within the unceded ancestral lands of the Shakemek Nation. The TNRD appreciates the partnership we have with Takumloops to Shakemek and respect the territory and land on which we gather today. Don't normally do chair's announcements at Committee of the Whole, but there is one thing to announce. One of our directors has a birthday today. So happy birthday to Director Lee Morris. And I understand there's already been an impromptu happy birthday singing, so I don't think we have to do it again. So you can, you can thank me later. All right, item 3.1, we have the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes for March 28. Who'd like to move them?
With a recommendation.
Vice Chair Smith, seconded by Director O'Reilly. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is carried. We move straight into delegations and invited presentations. And as far as I know, we are kicking off with Telus. Presentation from Telus Local Government Relations Lead Jared Anderson. Mr. Anderson is joining us via the wonders of technology, so welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, and happy birthday, Director Lee Morris. I need to just share my screen here. Can everyone see this okay? Wonderful, okay. So good morning, and thank you again for this opportunity to address the Thompson Nicola Regional District Committee of the Whole. As mentioned, my name is Jared Anderson. I am Telus's Local Government Relations Lead for British Columbia, and I am pleased to be joined today by my colleague Jeff Kruckshank, who is Telus's General Manager for BC's Interior Region. We'd like to start off by expressing our sincere gratitude to the TNRD for hosting us today and for the collaborative partnership that we have built together over the years. Now, over the past several years, our region has faced unprecedented challenges: devastating wildfires, catastrophic flooding, and a global pandemic that tested our collective strength. But through each crisis, we have witnessed something remarkable: the power of partnership. And working alongside the TNRD, we haven't just rebuilt, but we've built back better, stronger, and more connected than before. And so today, we're excited to share some of the tangible progress that we've made together in advancing connectivity across the TNRD. And much of this progress has been made possible through the board and communities in valuable letters of support, which have been instrumental in securing funding and moving critical infrastructure projects forward. But we're not just here to talk about what we've done. We're here to listen, to learn, and to explore how we can continue to work together to bridge the digital divide and ensure that every resident and business in the TNRD has access to the connectivity that they need to thrive. So thank you again for your partnership and for the vital work that you do in serving your communities. So Telus has an unwavering commitment to the well-being of the communities we serve. We believe that strong communities are built through meaningful, through not just meaningful investment, not just in infrastructure, but specifically in the people. So since the year 2000, Telus has provided over $2.3 million in cash and in-kind contributions directly to TNRD communities. And these investments have been amplified by the incredible dedication of our team members, who have volunteered over 410,000 hours in support of local charities and community organizations. So our partnerships, they span diverse community needs. We're proud supporters of organizations such as Ask Wellness Society, Adaptive Sports at Sun Peak Society, as well as the Power of Play Initiative. Each of these address critical aspects of community health and wellness. However, what we're most proud of is our ability to respond when our communities face their greatest challenges. So in 2023, when wildfires impacted the Squaylax TC Camp Muk community, we immediately mobilized to provide tablets and connectivity solutions, ensuring residents could stay connected to emergency services, loved ones, and critical information during evacuations. In 2021, when the Nikomen and Nuiich and Shakin First Nations were affected by flooding, Telus team members offered assistance. We supplied immediate relief in the form of food, water, and essential goods, as well as we distributed tablets to school-aged children to assist in their transition to online learning. This is all occurring while we are working to reinstate crucial communication services. These are examples that illustrate our core belief: connectivity isn't just about technology. It's about keeping communities strong, resilient, and connected to what matters most, especially during times of crisis.
Okay, I'll take the next piece. Thanks, Jared. And hi, everybody. I think I've connected with a few of you over the years, so nice to see some of you again. Maybe just a few comments on where we are at today with respect to connectivity in the TNRD. So today, we serve 11 of the 12 member municipalities through, you know, our Canada's fastest, most reliable pure fiber network or our Mask On service, obviously directly to homes and businesses. In the one member municipality where we currently do not offer these services, we have thankfully received a letter of support from the TNRD and, you know, are continually reviewing what our options are with respect to that community. We're particularly proud that 21 of 24 Indigenous communities in the TNRD are connected or actively being connected to Telus Pure Fiber, which is part of our commitment to Indigenous reconciliation. And maybe a comment too, just about, you know, the TNRD. I mean, we are members of that community. You know, a lot of us obviously live and work there, you know, and are very much connected to, you know, the work that we're doing in a very personal way. You know, and Jared mentioned natural disasters, more evidence of that as well. They impact us in our own community. And one of the advantages that we bring is that we're there. We're local. You know, we view ourselves as actively working to, you know, support the communities that we live and work in. So it is a very personal experience for a lot of us. But because we're there, you know, our response times are fast and our, you know, our personal attachment to making things happen is very high. And as Jared said, we don't just rebuild, we upgrade. So when we have, you know, some of our legacy services destroyed, we upgrade and install Pure Fiber, which improves the connectivity, you know, for example, in places like Merritt, Litton, Lee Creek, et cetera. So, you know, that is also, while, you know, not the, not the experience we would want to go through, an opportunity for us to leave it better than it was before. So that's kind of a current state, you know, showing some of the investment that we've made in the TNRD so far. And if you bumped me one ahead, Jared. So just, you know, a further highlight of some recent work in the TNRD. You know, there's some examples here of partnership work we've done with, you know, obviously Telus, ISAD, the Innovation Science and Economic Development Group, the Northern Development Initiative Trust, NDIS, and the All Nations Trust Company and Co. So, you know, a lot of partnership goes into making these projects happen. And as one example to highlight, the Canyon Corridor featured here is a project that's establishing last-mile fiber network along 55 kilometers of Highway 1 from Litton to Spuzzam. So when this is complete, it will connect over 2,000 previously underserved households, over 300 of which are Indigenous families. And maybe a comment on this, because I think it's part of the challenge that we are collectively facing is rural deployment costs, on average, about two and a half times more than urban areas. You know, I'm probably evident to most of you, due to low population density across vast distances. You know, BC's topography is beautiful, but also challenging. And so, you know, in this particular case, you know, as an example, a project of $2 million would connect only around 200 households. So, you know, the economic output investment required, you know, certainly is significant. Yet despite these challenges, we are committed. Telus is very committed to bringing the connectivity to as many places as we can, supporting rural and Indigenous communities, and ensuring that, you know, being part of the journey of making sure everyone has access to the same world-class level of connectivity.
So where, where do we go next? So Telus, we, again, deeply valued the strong partnership that we have with the TNRD. And again, those letters of support have been crucial in securing funding for these connectivity projects that do benefit the entire region. And we have a shared commitment to world-class connectivity for all residences and businesses, and continuous collaboration on transformative regional projects. In 2025, we will be delivering improvements with 11 cell site upgrades planned or completed. With more planned in the following years, these upgrades will directly enhance mobile connectivity and coverage for residents and businesses across the TNRD. We are also working to establish one of Canada's first two sovereign AI factories in Kamloops, which will position the community as a leader in next-generation AI infrastructure and sustainable technology development. This facility actually represents a historic investment that will keep Canadian data, computations, and AI breakthroughs within our borders, strengthening national digital sovereignty while creating economic opportunities for the region. We also appreciate the TNRD's support on the multiple applications we have right now for co-funding agreements that span over 15 communities. We'll continue to explore the most impactful projects we can work with funding partners to connect. But as, as you know, and as Jeff alluded to, due to the large scale of these projects, not everywhere can be approved, designed, and built at once. But we're very optimistic within the CCBC program to build on the success shared in previous slides. So we remain highly invested in the TNRD's long-term digital transformation, and we're going to continue working continuously on projects that will drive economic growth, innovation, and community prosperity throughout the region.
And with that, just want to say thank you once again to everybody on this call. We do appreciate the partnership. We appreciate the support, the letters of support, the advocacy. Again, you know, we are very co-invested in this. You know, a lot of these communities are very personal to many of us. So the opportunity to advance connectivity is, you know, obviously something we're all very interested in. And your support has, as Jared said, been very instrumental in securing funding that advances infrastructure projects that, that obviously improve connectivity throughout the region. So we're not done. We're excited to keep going. As Jared mentioned, there are many projects in our funnel this year. And, you know, we look forward to being able to announce more details on some of those as we, as we near them. But in advance of that, thank you for the partnership, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Kruckshank. Questions from anyone here? First up is Director Grenier. Anyone else would like, has a question or comment, please put up your hand. I've got Director O'Toole, Vice Chair Smith. Director Smith, Director Grenier, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us. Good to see you again, Jeff. And I appreciate you being on this call today. I wanted to ask you about Tronkial Valley, the CRTC decision. And the CRTC and others indicate they're hopeful that in three years' time, there might be technology that allows cellphone use with satellite. Is that something that Telus thinks might be doable within the three-year timeframe, that the decision was there?
So I will caveat this by saying I am not the foremost Telus expert on that exact question, but I have talked to our internal teams about it. And I would generalize by saying this: yes, we are optimistic that is a possibility. And you are right, that the LEO Low Earth Orbit Satellite Solution is the most likely to serve some of these harder-to-reach communities or where building physical infrastructure is just either challenging or super expensive. And yes, I'm told that that timeline is very likely with a progression of services from text to then voice to then, you know, a version of data. And, you know, something in the two- to three-year timeframe is what I've been told.
supplementary? Sure. Oh, thank you. Thanks for that. The, as you know, the TNRD has been talking with connected communities. And Connected Communities has expressed interest in possibly funding cellular towers in remote areas. And our, our board and directors have said, would there be a telecommunications company that would be interested in part of that partnership if Connected Communities was to fund a cell tower or cell towers? Would Telus be interested in looking at that potential partnership?
I think Telus generally is always interested in those kind of partnerships. And the one element I would call out, because this conversation is common. I mean, one of the benefits of my job is I get to travel throughout BC, which is amazing. In the course of those travels, I hop over four or five mountain passes sometimes as part of those same travels, you know, also generally unconnected. One of the, one of the pieces around building cell towers is not just the initial capital outlay, but also the ongoing, you know, operational cost. And, you know, anything kind of, you know, in that space, rural, remote, has a heavy operational cost. And without getting into the details, just, you know, power generators, backup power, you know, just the actual construction of a tower on a mountainside. You know, you get into some pretty toothy details pretty quickly. So yes, Telus always interested, absolutely. And then, you know, the piece that might need to be discussed with, with our partnership with government is, is there an appetite to support the ongoing operational cost of those types of expenses?
Director O'Toole?
Thanks very much. Thanks very much, Jeff and Jared, for your presentation. Just a question, looking for maybe a bit of direction in, for Sun Peaks. If we're looking to get in contact with somebody on your side to have some discussion around connectivity issues, who would be the best person to go out?
Start with me.
Okay. So I can probably just get your email here from staff at the TNRD for that?
Yeah, Director Grenier has it, or somebody will have it. And I'm always a good starting point, either myself or Jared, but I'm happy to be the starting point for that one. And as I've told Director Grenier before, I love the word "general" in my title, because it implies that I have to go ask somebody specifically for more details.
Thank you.
Director Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks very much for the presentation. I was just wondering if there'd be a possibility that you could start communicating a little bit more with the TNRD about mapping for some of the future areas that are, that are on your radar. The reason I ask that is that I was, I was showing a map in 2022 of the 70 Mile House Green Lake area. And I was indicated that it would be finished by '24 or '25. And here we are at mid-'25, and there's been absolutely no activity at all. So I'm just wondering if we can get kind of a little bit clearer picture? I know that some of it is, is difficult, but we were on the list at one time.
Absolutely. So, and again, by all means, reach out to me directly on that one. I'll go, I can easily go back and find out what might have been on the, on the plan and get an update on where it sits. I don't know offhand specifically that area and what was intended back in 2022, but I can, I can definitely find out. And yes, generally speaking, happy to have those conversations as often as, as anyone would like. I mean, we would like to be well-connected with, with you all on, you know, what the connectivity plans are.
Thank you. Director Sal?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your presentation there. When you talked about operational cost coverage of cell towers, I just want to, for my awareness, do you mean by how many people are local residents in that community? It's the cell towers serve? Or would you factor in as well? For example, our Upper Clearwater Community in Wells Gray Park, there's literally hundreds of thousands of subscribers for cell services to pass through the area for tourism interests every summer. As well as Highway 5, there are still sections without cell service where, you know, again, hundreds of thousands of multiple different user groups pass through. I'm just wondering if, if that is part of the formula when you consider the operational costs for cell towers? Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question. To some degree, yes. And again, I'll, I'll speak generally. And maybe I'll give an example this way, because I think it's relevant to many of you in this meeting. You know, you go back four or five years when, you know, we all went through the pandemic and remote work became, you know, more common, which also then meant remote living became more common. And a lot of our smaller towns and cities grew exponentially, not only in terms of density, but sometimes the borders of the town would expand. And so what's happened, you know, over time is that we've seen what was originally pretty good cell coverage in an area suddenly become not as useful for everybody there. But you might have in a, in a particular town, two new subdivisions of people that live outside the cell footprint. You know, there might be 50 or 100 people, right? Well, generally speaking, a cell tower is, let's ballpark it at $1 million. You know, a $1 million cell tower for 100 people is a, is a, is an enormous expense. Now, you know, so then it comes down to what you articulated well, which is, you know, what's the other use of that? What's the safety element and all those things? So it is all part of that conversation. There are some macroeconomics that get factored in, but it's not the only thing. There are certainly flow-through traffic, public safety elements. But, but I would generally say the smaller, consistent population and the more rural and remote the infrastructure, the more expensive it is, obviously, to, to support on an ongoing basis, if that helps.
Director O'Connor?
Thank you. I'm Denise O'Connor from the village of Litton. Over the last year, we've had two quite major outages, cell outages, for quite lengthy periods of time and without any landlines in the area at all. I'm just wondering if you can shed any light? Can we anticipate more of those? We've heard rumors of stealing copper and things like that as the cause. I'm just wondering if you can shed any light on those and if we can anticipate more?
Well, I would like to believe we will never anticipate outages. So, so that's the optimist in me. Yeah, I mean, without getting too deep into that, yeah, we obviously, you know, had a, had a longer uptake on, on a bit of a rebuild in Litton. And we did have some outages. There are, by the way, yes, unfortunately, the demand for copper that's being ripped out of the ground is high. And we actually have a, a higher instance of copper theft in our, in our ecosystem than ever before, to the point where we're sometimes engaging municipalities or communities directly for awareness. You know, we do have wireless-based or internet-based phone service as well. So there are options, other than just the traditional phone line. You know, cell service slash internet-based service allows some redundancy. So I could maybe even contact you directly, if you like, just to maybe talk that one through a little more specifically around Litton in general. I'd be happy to do that.
Yes, thank you.
Vice Chair Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I'm, my name is Robin Smith. I'm the mayor for the District of Logan Lake. I'm just curious, you had a, I believe, a spur line along 97D that you were looking at that would be bringing fiber into our community? So I'm just curious where that might be at? Thank you.
Yeah, so that Logan Lake is conspicuously the, the one community out of the 12 that I was referencing. We're, we're still looking at it. And again, there's a longer view of this that I can probably provide you offline. We obviously have an interest. You know, we have periodically had some challenges with our aging copper infrastructure there. It's, it's on our radar. I don't have anything concrete I can offer you on this call other than to say it is definitely with our, our Pure Fiber Development Team. And I think I, I can get you an offline update on, on maybe more specifically where that sits. There's nothing, I can tell you this, like, just to be transparent. You know, we, we obviously had a meeting about this maybe about a year ago, and there was nothing imminent at the time. But I have not gotten a recent update from them, you know, over the past couple months. So I can do that and then connect with you offline.
I'd appreciate that. And in your presentation there, you had 32 communities that are basically getting 5G. I think Logan Lake is probably listed in there, but I can tell you we're paying for 5G, but we're not actually receiving the service.
Okay, I can, I can check on that, too.
Director Ranta?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the presentation. My name is John Ranta from the village of Cache Creek. And my understanding is that we've got fiber optic cable that runs through our community and goes down the Fraser Canyon. But we don't have fiber optic connectivity within the village. And I'm just wondering what the best way to go about getting fiber optic into the village of Cache Creek is? Is it you I contact, Mr. Anderson? Or who should I speak to to try and speed up the introduction of fiber optic connectivity in Cache Creek?
Yeah, you can certainly email both Jeff and I, and then we can have that conversation with you.
And I can generalize and say, you know, there is a general update we can speak to, which we, we can take offline. But, but that's definitely a conversation we should have.
Director Thorpe?
Thank you, Chair. I'm Tricia Thorpe. I'm the Area Director for Area I of the TNRD that goes north of Cache Creek, all the way down south of Litton. We have a number of areas that have no cellphone service, as you know, along the highways. So that is of concern, especially along, say, the Highway 8 corridor or the 99 corridor and the Highway 12 corridor. But my question kind of relates back to what Director O'Connor was talking about, about the outages in the Litton area, which has also impacted my residents. In talking to Telus, I understand that, if I have this right, the issue has been some thefts or something that has happened in the Lower Mainland and relates to a connection that goes up to the cellphone tower just above Sheshweb Gas in Area I. My question is, is there a way of having an alternate relay system maybe coming down the corridor so that we don't have these continued outages, please?
Yeah, that's a great question. I will want to go double-check something, because you're talking, you're speaking about redundancy. And the Telus network does have redundancy built in. I'm going to say almost everywhere. However, there may be something specific to that Lower Mainland pipe that I'm not as familiar with, just because I'm not, I'm not Lower Mainland-centric, but I can track that down for sure. And it may be something that has already been updated, because I do know redundancy is, is a focus. Obviously, our goal is to have that built in so that if we have an initial failure, we have a backup. So let me find out what the Lower Mainland connection is specifically, and I can follow up with you directly.
Thank you. This is Chair Barbara Roden, Mayor of the Village of Ashcroft. The TNRD wrote a formal letter of support for Telus. It was an application you were making to the Connecting Communities Fund back in December of 2022. And at the time, we were told it would provide increased connectivity to areas in and around Ashcroft, Cache Creek, Savanaw, 70 Mile House, Logan Lake, Barrier, Vavenby, Westside, and Chase. And it was to provide fiber optic directly to residences and businesses for people who live within a municipality or in the surrounding electoral area. It was estimated that Cache, at the Ashcroft, Cache Creek, and 70 Mile networks, between them would bring fiber optics to 2,680 households. So that was two and a half years ago. I think it's safe to say none- I think it's safe to say none of that has happened. I echo Director Ranta's query about the fact that fiber optic runs very close to our communities and to communities and First Nations along the Highway one, Highway ninety seven corridor. And we're increasingly seeing that that is becoming a barrier to people moving to our rural areas, whether it's a municipality or within the regional district. Because A, they are accustomed to getting very fast connectivity if they are moving from almost anywhere else. And B, a lot of people are choosing a rural lifestyle, but they are combining that with entrepreneurship and business. And they need a high speed internet for that. And the fact that they cannot get it in our rural areas is a distinct barrier and a real bar to economic development for all of us in the TNRD. So I think I'm safe in saying I speak for all of us that we would really like to see the major telecommunications companies. I guess stop treating us like second class citizens and start giving us the service that people in more urban areas take for granted. I can only imagine the uproar if people in Kelowna or Surrey were lucky to get a fifty down and five up speed. I I think that the telecom companies would be moving very quickly to rectify that situation. And and this was two and a half years ago. We were asked to provide a letter of support. Been cricket since then. So I think we'd really like to see some action and something concrete on the ground.
Thank you. That application that you reference, in addition to two others, are currently within the government, and we are waiting for a response on those applications. We do chat often with them as it pertains to those. I do think that it would absolutely be worthwhile for us to chat about the Mascon services that are available in Ashcroft and any sort of retirement of those and how we proceed with that.
Well, funnily enough, my son, who has just moved back to Ashcroft from Kamloops, we contacted Mascon, with whom we have our our internet service, and asked them for the fastest speed we could get. And so they did that. And my son told me last night that, yes, it's better than what we had, which was putatively the the fifty down and and five or ten up, which yeah, we were lucky to get that. It's better now, but it is still not what he got in Kamloops. And that is, and I specifically made sure, I said to Mascon, I need the fastest you can get me. And they said, this is it. And we're an hour from Kamloops. And I know that we're talking rural here for much of the regional district. I appreciate that. But there are many parts of the TNRD, as again, Director Ranta said, we have fiber optic running within it right through our communities. That is not rural or remote by any stretch of the imagination. The application back in December of twenty twenty two pointed out that it would be providing fiber optics to, for example, the Ashcroft Indian Band. It would be providing fiber optics to Sixteen Mile in Area I. It would be providing fiber optic to Bonaparte First Nation IR three. So this is not just communities. This is a lot of our rural residents, many of whom do live within a stone's throw of the highway and fiber optics. So just saying that Ashcroft, yes, we could get faster, but it's still not anywhere near what we could get an hour away here in Kamloops.
Thank you. I think let's discuss this offline. I think there will be some exciting updates as it pertains to connectivity in Ashcroft shortly.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Director Sal?
Thank you, Chair, and and thank you again both for for coming, you know, spending time with us today. My intention is not to put you on the spot, but I I do want some clarification. Now, remembering back to the last UBCM, we had met with the Minister of Citizen Services. And it was explained to us, the those of us who attended the meeting, that there was a program for cell tower construction that nobody had applied to, like Telus or Rogers or any service providers. And there were tens of millions of dollars available. So five, sorry, five million dollars, so fifty million dollars available. Thank you, Director Grenier. So any comments on that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, so the the fund that you're referring to, much like most provincial and federal subsidies only cover capital expenditures. And this is something that Jeff talked about earlier in our presentation. So those capital expenditures are for building the cellular infrastructure. But again, not for ongoing operational costs. So those long term costs, such as, you know, maintenance, power, backhaul, technical support, components like that, which make the the projects, despite potential support from government, still very hard from a financial perspective. We would really appreciate your, the TNRD's advocacy to government for improved wireless funding models. And perhaps, you know, us doing a public private partnership with the TNRD as one of those solutions. But something that includes operational expenses to support alongside those capital fundings. We think that these enhanced funding models would accelerate cellular deployment across the TNRD and supporting our mutual connectivity goals.
Thank you very much and with respect, if I may, just a suggestion, you know, Telus being a private business, for profit business, there's also maybe potential for you to add a surcharge or additional fees to subscribers. You know, you have millions of subscribers to pay for operational costs to add development of networks. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And and I debated whether to say this. I'll just note that when local governments apply for grant funding, which does ultimately come from all of us taxpayers, whether provincially or federally, we don't get operational costs. We get the costs to build something and operations are up to us. And we are certainly not for profit corporations. So I'm just going to note that, 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 yes, I can see your point, but I think it's a big ask when we don't even get that from public funding. Anyone else have any questions or comments? If Mr. Anderson, Mr. Kriechank, if you'd be able to just provide your your contact information, or do we have it available? Looking, I see people nodding at the back, so I'm taking that as a guess. All right, and no other hands up. So thank you very much, gentlemen, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
And moving right along, next up, we have a presentation from Rogers Communications Director of Government Affairs, Cavy Bowe, who is on, again, joining us via the wonders of technology. So welcome, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. Can everyone hear me and see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, board and staff. A real pleasure to be joining you today. My name is Cavy Bowe. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Rogers Communications. I'm based out of Vancouver, and I'm joining you from there this morning. It's a real pleasure to be joining the TRD on a personal note. I'm originally from Kamloops, have have was raised in Kamloops and completed high school and graduated Norcam Secondary. So it's that this community is very near and dear to my heart. To begin with their presentation, I just wanted to touch base on Rogers across Canada. Our business model is twofold, one in telecom, second in broadcasting. A number of our brands include Rogers Mobility, or as our prime brand, Chatter Mobile and Fido. Within the three brands, we can reach ninety eight percent of Canada's population. On the broadcasting side, we have a numbers of television stations, including twelve television stations. Brands that are familiar would be City TV, including City News, Sportsnet, Omni Television, that delivers a lot of multicultural programming, Rogers TV, supporting local content and local television and community television, and radio stations like Sportsnet five ninety, City News, and Jack. Speaking to something that Telus touched on earlier, our business is very capital intensive. Right now, ninety percent of our profits are actually delivered back into our network and committed back into capital funding. Last year alone, we spent four billion dollars in capital across the country. A significant portion of it going to British Columbia as our fastest growing market. And we plan to spend another twenty billion dollars over the next five years, with over half of that allocated to the Western provinces. Right now, again, we are investing a billion dollars a year in Canadian content, supporting Canadian broadcasters and Canadian and local Canadian production, and support a hundred million dollars, a hundred million dollars have made, pardon me, have made over a hundred million dollars of investments through our Ted Rogers Scholarship Scholarship Foundation and the Ted Rogers Community Grant Program that support that supports students and community development in Lake. As you all know, Rogers and Shaw came together in April third of two thousand and twenty three, creating one one company. What this did, Board, is that it really unlocked the capabilities of Rogers in Western Canada. Rogers, as you know, previously had a significant footprint in Eastern Canada in both wireline and cable and internet and wireless. While our Western footprint was very much so as a wireless company with, you know, with very very limited wireline assets. When the two companies came together, it really unlocked Shaw's footprint in in wireline, allowing us to significantly wrap up our business offerings and being able to provide home services as well as the cellular services that customers were used to. As part of the merger of the two companies, we made a significant commitment to both the government of Canada and the government of British Columbia and how we were about to invest in the years coming forward. A total of six point five billion dollars was committed to the Western provinces to ensure that we keep, that we maintain and grow our footprint in the West and continue to operate as such. As a note, I would add that our our local technicians that were previously Shaw in many communities that you are familiar with have continued and and joined the Rogers team. And you would have noticed the blue vans turning into red vans over the past number of years. Specifically for British Columbia, we have committed five hundred million dollars to connect rural and underserved households that remain in the province. Right now, we are have just finished our desktop exercise program and have mapped out these communities and are looking at going into field studies to begin construction in the coming years. Alongside that, we have committed two and a half billion dollars to the increase the coverage of five G. Eight hundred and sixty million dollars of that has been deployed, and last year alone, twenty six new communities in B C were connected to five G services. And three billion dollars have been committed across the West to improve technology investments, namely into our DOCSIS network, which is our cable network, to bring it to to bring it to a technology called DOCSIS point four point oh, which will provide symmetrical speeds of two gigabytes up and two gigabytes down across their traditional cable network, improving connectivity and reducing infrastructure costs as we improve services in communities like yourselves. Some of the things that we're very proud of on a community basis are are three programs, two programs specifically. One, our SensNet Advanced Wildfire Detection Program, where we partnered with a local B C company that are leaders in wildfire prevention and are exploring how we use our assets and deploy these solutions to target, you know, the devastating wildfires that we've seen across British Columbia, especially in the region of the TNRD. And our Connected for Success program. Our Connected for Success program, which I'll get get into further detail, is our low cost internet and five G cell program that provides cell cell coverage and internet coverage to those that need it the most. And I just wanted to highlight again, our commitment to Western Canada. As we expanded our footprint here, we are committed to creating three thousand new jobs in both B C and Alberta. Projects that are currently in flight for us that are that are notable in the TNRD, I'll touch on three that are our largest right now and have a have the majority of the focus for the local teams. One is the Kamloops to Merritt Fiber Build. This project was was taken upon with support through the B C government through N D I T. It's construction of a redundancy fiber network that will eventually connect Kamloops right down to Hope through the Coca Hala corridor. There's two aspects to this, two segments to this project. First, the Kamloops to Merritt Fiber Build. That's that's going to be complete at the end of this year. It's currently in flight, and we're working with our partners in the government and the Ministry of Transportation to finish this, finish this off. Also, the works are now completed, and we're expecting completion of that segment of fiber in two thousand and twenty five. In parallel, we have also been working on our Merritt to Hope Fiber Build with completion slated for two thousand and twenty six. It's a continuation of the first segment, and when this segment is complete, we'll begin to look at the cellular infrastructure that we can improve to make contiguous coverage available along the Coca Hala Highway, where we've seen previous dead zones. And then lastly, touching into the into the into the fiber from Hope to Merritt, I'm sorry, Hope to Kamloops. There's been a commitment made to Logan Lake to bring a line of fiber along ninety seven D. We're working very closely with the C A O there and the and the team who have advanced a number of permits and a number of early works permits to 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 anticipate for this project. Currently, we need to finish both the Kamloops to Merritt Build and the Merritt to Hope Build to successfully connect these. But we're anticipating the start of early works in Logan, in the Logan Lake area for twenty in twenty twenty six. And throughout the project timeframe, it will, our goal is to connect over a thousand underserved homes and municipal hubs. Coming back to Connected for Success, Rogers Connected for Success is a low cost, high speed internet wireless service that was expanded into British Columbia alongside the merger of Rogers and Shaw. What this program does, it provides high speed internet with plans starting at nine ninety nine per month and wireless plans that start that are priced at twenty five dollars a month, including a no cost five G cellphone to those people that need the help the help the most. And this includes some of our most vulnerable populations. There are a set of criterias that are are needed to access this program. But essentially, it comes down to if you're receiving any type of government support, either from the province, the federal government, Rogers is willing to provide a helping hand. This is, this program has been tremendously growing since its launch in the West. About a hundred thirty three percent uptake in two thousand and twenty four, after its launch in twenty three for the wireless program, and an eighty five percent increase in the West since twenty twenty four on the wireline side as well. What we're doing with local governments and local governments and community associations are we're partnering with them to create, to reduce the barriers of access to this program so that, for example, when you come in and receive other other forms of support, that we can merge our product offerings together and and make that reduce that barrier of entry. A really good example of that is in the city of Calgary. We partnered with them on their low cost income support programs. And essentially, when you go into Calgary and apply for, say, a subsidized bus pass or a subsidized fitness center pass, there's a check mark right on the form where it says, can Rogers contact you and offer their services? Or would you like to be connected to someone to get access to further supports? Another project that we're we're very excited to talk about is our satellite to mobile provider. Satellite to mobile, satellite to mobile technology is available in almost every smartphone, smartphone available today. What's holding us back is, you know, the launch of those low earth orbit satellites. That process has been underway at Rogers for a number, for about approximately about two years now, as we've worked to, you know, advance this technology. Our hope is that we will be able to launch the first phase of services, which would include text messaging in two thousand and twenty five with voice services and data services trailing. This is especially important to nine one one access that is universal, especially in our rural areas. As the next generation of nine one one is introduced in local communities, text to nine one one will be a big advantage to address some of those issues and emergency situations in our most rural regions. This does not take away from our commitment to investing in terrestrial infrastructure, namely wireline and wireless. It's just another tool in the toolkit that will support connectivity for connectivity region to region. But it does not substitute the the need we have to increase our wireline footprint with fiber and our wireless footprint with with new towers and macro installations. Lastly, touching on SensNet, SensNet is a company that was founded in two thousand and nineteen in North Vancouver. It was actually incubated through the University of British Columbia. In early two thousand and twenty four, Rogers and SensNet became began working together to advance their wildfire detection technology. What the technology is, is as you'll see on the screen, is a series of cameras and gas sensors that collectively have the ability to map and and map and prevent and inform of wildfires as they develop. For example, the the gas sensors in that are installed in communities, they detect the changes in C O, C O two, P M two five, and P M five, and P M, P M ten, all air quality measures that, you know, are indicative of wildfires. And if if readings go up and down, these cameras that are mounted on Rogers infrastructure, namely cell towers, have the ability to rotate using A I and advanced technology to zoom in. Have the ability to rotate using A I and and advanced technology to zoom in, give and give you a sense of what is coming. Um, together, we're partnering with U B C O and the B C Wildfire Service to have further discussions about how we can collaborate to bring. This technology to a wider region of British Columbia. Um, right now, there is a number of trials that are occurring across the province on how this technology will work with the wildfire service. And in and in addition, um, some communities have actually decided to for decided to go downstream of commercial deployments. With cameras in place in Vernon, Kelowna and Harrison Hot Springs. Uh, we're committing, we're committed to using our national network to support this type of technology. Especially in British Columbia, because we have seen the devastating natures of wildfire and what it does to our communities. Lastly, I do I do want to touch on one topic very head on, and it is about delivering value and competitiveness. Um, since two thousand and nineteen, cellular prices are down forty-six point seven percent and internet pricing is down five point four percent. Uh, this is a measure of that is provided by the the government of Canada through their annual C P I index. Uh, at the same time, C P I and the cost of living rose by eighteen point three percent in all other sectors. Um, we want to be continue to drive more value. We we understand that there are situations and. At situations that need further support, hence our Connected Six for Success Program. But I do want to emphasize that between the major carriers right now. Uh, competition is is quite fierce and we are driving uh the the driving, driving the market to more competitive competitive nature, pardon me. And then lastly, just touching on um how we build in Canada. Canadian carriers, you know, it's it's a different landscape than what we see in the United States um in countries like Australia. Our geographic nature and the vast nature of our country is is. Is conducive to an environment where we need more cell towers and infrastructure than our partners. For example, Canada has fifty more percent cell towers per capita than Australia, despite having around the same population. Um, and this continues to be inductive of how and where we spend our money. Um, it is very challenging to build in the last remaining regions that need to be connected, but we are still committed to doing as such. I'll leave it at that, and then I'll open the floor to questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone have questions? Director Grenier, O'Toole, and Getz, and Houghton to start with?
Thank you, Chair. Um, and thank you uh very much, uh, Mr. Bow. Uh, it was wonderful to see you at uh U B C M. And to know that we have a uh hometown Kamloops fellow uh familiar with our area and our challenges. Uh, you had mentioned ninety-seven uh D and the connectivity to Logan Lake. Uh, that's also uh the Meadow Creek Road area. And um, there was a tower put up uh or proposed through T N R D. That we approved, and I wonder if you could report on that, plus the connectivity to Lack Lejeune, which is part of. My area, which is just uh along the Coca-Cola Corridor and at ninety-seven D. And then uh the Cherry Creek Community, which is north of that, but also we had talked about benefiting from that Coca-Cola trunk main that you were putting in.
Thank you, Mr. Grenier. Um, I'll touch on Lack Lejeune first. I I know that the capital planning team is is looking at Lack Lejeune as we. As we construct in ninety-seven D, because what in the area makes the best economic sense to, you know, to further increase that spur. Um, I'll get back to you on the details of that. Um, I think it might be easier to to. Go back, share some mapping and get some capital plan information before I, before I come back with you on the details. On the Meadow Lake um piece, I am not particularly familiar with it, but I, again, will get back to you on with a subject matter expert and happy to have that discussion.
Supplementary to that. And uh, similar to my question to uh uh the folks from Telus. Uh, you've indicated that Rogers is putting a high priority on cell tower connectivity in rural areas. And uh, we have been in connection or in 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 touch with connected communities. Who have talked about uh a cell tower program for some of these remote areas and indicating that if we could. Uh, get some uh partnership with uh a telco as well, that that might be solving the solution. Is that something that the. Rogers would be interested in uh if we could identify some areas that uh that could use some cell towers and that connectivity?
Very open to the those discussions. Um, I know we've partnered with both C C D C and N D I T in the past on other cellular infrastructure, so. Would would it be happy to have that conversation together with the folks from the government of B C?
Oops, Director O'Toole, let's try that again.
Thanks very much, Chair. Thanks for your presentation, Mr. Bow. Um, refreshing to see the work that you're doing and uh you you seem to be kind of working in a proactive manner. Uh, commend you for your your work, helping in communities like Merritt, Logan Lake. Just wondering if you have any background on looking at that aspects of what you're doing on that north-south corridor? If we might see something similarly working up the number five corridor. Uh, past Sun Peaks, Mansula, you know, on up to Barrier, Clearwater, Blue River. Is is that something on Rogers' radar in the near future?
It is on the radar. Um, it's actually been in the project plan for quite a while now. We've encountered some challenges that were unexpected. Uh, unfortunately, I can't, I can't comment on those challenges in a broad public setting, but I I am happy to have that conversation.
Thanks very much.
Director Getz?
Uh, thank you for your presentation. Just a house cleaning item. You've spelt Merritt wrong. You're missing a T on the end of it on your slides. So. Uh, just letting you know, thanks.
My sincere apologies.
Yeah.
Director Houghton?
Thank you for your presentation. Uh, you mentioned you're doing work from uh Kamloops to Merritt on the Coca-Cola Corridor. I'm the area director for Ariel, which is south and east of Kamloops. Is there any thoughts of connecting? Just south of Kamloops, down Stump Lake, Nicola Lake, down into uh uh. Electoral area Laird's area down, down five A. Is there? Is that that whole corridor lacks connection right from the doorstep of Kamloops right to uh, right to Nicola Lake?
Right now, um, a number of, a number of homes in those areas are being considered under our five hundred million dollar investment in in rural and underserved homes. Um, I can get back to you with detailed project maps and that I can that I can share and we can and we can provide a picture of what's to come.
Voice Chair Smith.
Thank you, Chair. I'm uh, I'm Robin Smith, the mayor for the District of Logan Lake. I know you've had lots and lots of um discussion with our staff about our. Um, our scenario in Logan Lake, and I know you've been working hard to help us. Um, get connected. So I just want to say that I do appreciate the work that you've done for us. Um, this was a very, very welcome slide today, um, because uh the last that I had heard is that the the mapping. Um, was was indicating there was only three hundred homes that were underserved um in Logan Lake and obviously we. We did an updated study and shared that. Um, so I'm really, really glad to see this today. I'm just wondering whether that's actually. Um, a realistic new timeline. Um, and if you could just assure me that it is, I'd so much appreciate it. Thank you.
I I appreciate the comment, and and I just want to start by saying I really commend the staff at Logan Lake, especially Wade, who is. Who will call me on a weekly basis to get updates, so he is doing a great job. Um, I, right now, this is a very realistic timeline for us. I know we have been talking about this project for a number of years now. And it has been delayed when the two companies came together. Uh, but I I have a lot of optimism and confidence on where we're at right now, and especially where the fiber builds are at between Merritt all the way down to Hope.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? No? All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation today.
Thank you, Board. Appreciate your time.
And moving along to four point three, I sense a theme here this morning. Next up is um connected communities. We have a presentation from Connected Communities Executive Director Megan Chadwick, and Ms. Chadwick, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for having me here today. Um. I'm actually the Director for Community Relations with Connected Communities within Citizen Services. Um, thanks for the opportunity of to be here, and I do appreciate, you know, joining the meeting and. Uh, taking the time out to hear about our programming. I only have a short update today, um, but I do appreciate all the robust information that was provided by Telus and Rogers. Just highlighting the extensive work that has taken place in the T N R D and the efforts that are. Being made um to extend services to communities um through individual service provider. Uh, investment as well as the partnership that the province. Has with those service providers, which we are incredibly grateful for, because it really does support. Uh, all of our efforts to identify solutions for households across the province. Um, to support that collaboration, we are continuing to receive applications to fill service gaps in all areas, including the T R R D. Um, our Internet Service Expansion Fund, which is the Connected Communities B C Fund. Is in intake number six, and it does, it remains open with an extended submission deadline of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, for any project that is an assessment, we do continue to work to finalize the outcome of these applications by working with our federal partners, with local governments and. With communities that that these projects are intended to serve. Uh, so short and sweet update for me, but I am happy to take specific questions if uh there are any from your areas. I have heard that people do have questions about specific infrastructure, so they are welcome to reach out to me. Um, I don't know if I can put my contact in the chat, but. Doesn't look like I can, but uh I'm sure if you reach out to Corbin, he should be able to pass it on. And I'm happy to take any questions if there are any at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. And Director Grenier, you are three for three in being first off the mark here, so awesome. Anyone else while while I'm taking names down? Okay, Director Grenier, it's over to you.
Thank you. Uh, very good to see you again, Ms. Chadwick. It was wonderful meeting with you at uh, uh, the the um. U B C M last year, where we talked about the fifty million dollars that was available for cell towers and no subscriptions by the telecoms. I think you had identified at that meeting that operational aspects, quite apart from capital costs, were were part of the issue. Has that uh, and you had indicated that there was a fund, I think a federal fund, that was going to assist with that that problem? Uh, has that been resolved? And would we be able to, you've heard from the two telecoms that they'd be interested in partnerships? If we could somehow uh align the fifty million dollar fund for capital, an operating fund and uh these 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 two telecoms. I wonder if we could maybe solve a problem in our rural area in the T N R D. Would you have any comment on that? Thank you.
Uh, unfortunately, it wasn't at the U B C M meeting. That would have been our A D M, Susan Stanford. And I believe our executive director, Jeannie Hollis and Rachel Greenspan. That said, I am aware of the conversation and, you know, can say that we do have a provincial cellular expansion fund. As has been noted by Telus and Rogers and previously at the U B C M meeting. Operational expenses are not an eligible expense under the funding, um, just similar to any funding stream that you see across the province. Just due to the challenge in committing long term to funding an ongoing project. Uh, as far as a federal fund that would cover those operating expenses. Uh, I'm not currently aware of one. I know that there has been a conversation at the federal level about whether or not. Uh, funding eligibility could be extended to operational expenses, but as of this time, I haven't seen a decision to that effect.
So at that meeting, uh, it was suggested that the reason why there had been no applications for the fifty million was this uh this this puzzle about the operational costs. Uh, they did indicate that C R T C had a uh. Uh, a fund that they were considering, and and you just indicated that you're not aware of it. Is that something that we might be able to follow up with you uh offline? Uh, to see if we can bring all these missing pieces together so that we might be able to get some cell towers in the T N R D that we would otherwise not have?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to uh double check internally to see if there is something that I'm not aware of at this time. These things, you know, certainly there's always changes in the funding granting landscape, so I'd be happy to get back to you once. Um, I have done that confirmation.
Anyone else? I just want to clarify, um, when it was mentioned to Mr. Anderson of Telus that uh. The the twenty twenty-two letter of support that the T N R D wrote for the fiber optics plans they were proposing. Um, that it was, they were applying to the Connected Communities Program. Is that the program that you're speaking about today? Because Mr. Anderson indicated that the delay was in part that they had not heard back about the success of their application. Is there a connection between the two that you could perhaps elaborate on?
Sure, we do have that. The fund that we have open today would be the Connecting Communities B C Fund. Uh, there are previous iterations of this funding, both federal and provincial, with the same intended purpose of extending. Internet services across the province. At times, the adjudication and technical assessment of applications does take time. I can certainly uh, you know, take it away and look internally to see where that application is in process. So do feel free to follow up with me for an offline conversation.
Okay, thank you, because it was the Connecting Communities, and then Mr. Anderson did say that that he, as wait, they are waiting to hear back from. The funding body, so perhaps we can pursue this and see where the holdup is and and get the two parties aligned.
Absolutely. Do do feel free to follow up with me.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? No? All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation today.
Thank you so much for having with me. Sorry for having me, and I look forward to further conversations. Take care.
And I think we will just call a a five to ten minute recess right now, so that people can maybe go and get themselves another cup of coffee before we settle in for the second half. Which will probably not have anything to do with internet connectivity. All right, welcome back, everyone. And we are moving on to item five point one, which is regarding library services at Litton. We have a report from Chief Librarian Judy Moore. This will be the last report that she gives to the board, and I just want to say it has been a joy and a pleasure working with Judy over the last few years, especially. Uh, since joining the T N R D and getting to know her. Her passion for books and for libraries is absolutely second to none. I know she and her entire team think outside the box in extraordinary ways, and and that is proved by the large number of awards and recognitions for innovation. Um, that the T N R L has uh received over the last few years. So Judy, I just want to say that you will be very greatly missed. I know we're in very, very good hands. But you will be missed, and uh, good luck on your next phase of your adventure in Salt Lake City.
Thank you, Chair Roden, through to the board. It's been an absolute honor and privilege to serve as Chief Librarian for the Thompson Nicola Regional Library. And to the residents of the Thompson Nicola Regional District, um, an absolute career highlight and an amazing, amazing region. And uh, I realize that we're not especially using the regions, region of B C's best as a moniker, but I believe this is the region of B C's best. So thank you very much.
And I know a C A O Hildebrand wants to say a few words before you you give your report, but. Um, I, we heard from him yesterday that we have had interest in in the position you currently occupy from all over North America. And that, I think, is a glowing testament to what you and the entire T N R L team have built here. Um, because you don't get people coming from, applying from all over North America unless they think they are joining. A winner, something with proven success, and and a place where their imagination can run wild, to coin a phrase. So C A O Hildebrand, I know you have a few words to say.
Uh, thank you, Chair Roden. Um, actually, you've checked off every one of my comments, so I appreciate that. It was all not in, uh, we just, uh, as the staff team, we certainly appreciate the contribution that Judy's made over the last number of years. It'll be nine years, and uh, yeah, today is kind of, uh, it's the last day, last presentation, and we uh. I know it'll go well, and but we wish her well and uh on her new adventure.
Thank you. All right, so on to report regarding library services in the village of Litton and surrounding area. All right, so on to report regarding library services in the village of Litton and surrounding area.
Absolutely, there it is. So this report that I'm going to walk through this morning and presentation, it really follows the report that was tabled recently. But before I get started, I just want to introduce the members of my management team. We're, we're a small team of four. Jenny Abrahmsik. And Jenny is the manager of discovery and support services and she will be acting as interim chief librarian whilst the searches is going on for the general manager of library operations. Marco Schiller. Marco Schiller is the manager of Kamloops Libraries. And Melissa Lowenberg, manager of community libraries. And I'd like to recognize Melissa for her unwavering commitment to rural library services, including Litton. And for those of you that know Melissa Lowenberg well, you will know that she has been locked up with Litton and its community since the wildfire in twenty twenty-one, so wanted to recognize her efforts. All right, so a bit of a presentation overview here. We're going to talk about the background of Litton Library prior, prior to the wildfire. Just give some historical context in terms of how the library was performing. We'll talk about its loss. And then what we did to, you know, provide a stopgap of service, which continues to this time. And then, of course, as a direction provided to the library, we did undertake some research, some options and opportunities for providing library services in the Litton area on a permanent and ongoing basis, including the feasibility of establishing a new library within the village boundaries, as well as investigating opportunities to establish a library in partnership with nearby First Nations and other service options. So that's kind of a little summary of, of what I'm going to be talking about this morning. All right, so this is an image of the former Litton Library on Main Street. It was constructed as part of the Village Hall. It was a lovely little library. You know, not a, not a big footprint, about thousand seventy-eight square feet or so. But very cozy, wonderful aesthetic and of course, very warm and welcoming staff that, that were greeting patrons as they came in. It operated sixteen hours per week. And that's in line with our smaller gateway libraries across the regional district. We employed a part-time branch head who took kind of the lion's share of those hours of operations, so I don't know, about twelve hours, twelve to fourteen hours, and then we also had some casual staff. Because of its small footprint, we also utilized the council slash meeting room for any of our events and we had a shared washroom as well, so very much, you know, working as, as a shared service in, in the village there. A little bit of a trip down memory lane here. So while the TNRD was formerly the owner of the village office and the Litton Library, it was through an agreement and payback process that the village was moving towards full ownership of that property. And that was realized and crystallized after the wildfire. With the TNRD and formerly with the TNRD as the landlord, contributing approximately twenty-five percent towards operating costs. So again, that history of shared, shared model under one roof. So so I thought it would be helpful just to, just to give a sense to the board in terms of performance and a couple of the key metrics that we use on the library side have to do with visits. And in this particular slide, it's, it's annual circulations. So when we think about circulations, it's items that are being checked out, so you know, those physical items like books and CDs, DVDs, et cetera, magazines. But it's also digital and, and certainly since the time of this slide, we've, we've seen in all of our locations across the RD, you know, a terrific uptake on, on digital services as well. And we count those as circulations too. So you'll notice that if you follow that green line, which, which was Litton, it was kind of roughly in that nine thousand or so circulation per annum. It, you know, showed a little bit of a downturn here. Colleagues and I, you know, put our heads together. We couldn't quite explain the downturn as to what was happening. We did have some change of staff possibly at that time, but really, you know, kind of in, in, in the pack with those other libraries, Cache Creek, Savana and Clinton. So we refer to those as sort of the gateway libraries, similar size of communities. So another comparator is those annual visits. And again, it, you know, kind of no surprise, it really dovetails with what you saw in the previous slide in terms of the overall circulation there for Litton. So June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and I realize that we're just literally three days to the anniversary of the, the fourth anniversary of, of the wildfire that roared through that community to which we lost our, our, our library and, and you know, the devastation of, of the community. We, of course, you know, as the RD, working in the, on the backend of things, very consumed with the EOC and everything that was happening across the region. Twenty twenty-one was one of those just horrific years. It was, it was the Litton wildfires and then it was the flooding in through the Nicola Valley, which caused further devastation. And all the while, we were in a global pandemic. Terrible year. We, we began to think in the fall, early in the fall about what, what could a restoration to library service look like and, and what, what did we have as, as a resource, you know, that we could potentially utilize? Because of course, it wasn't the entire community that was lost. There were still residents in, in Upper Litton and in the surrounding communities. So we began to think about our mobile library. Mobile library, just as an FYI, twenty-nine stops every three weeks. So it, it kind of works on literally the half hour. It's a really well-oiled machine, so for us to immediately respond, that couldn't happen. But in working with the school district, we began discussions with Gold Trail about having a mobile library stop at the, at the school in the upper village of Litton. And, you know, we need an enormous turn radius. It's, it's not an easy vehicle to, to drive, to navigate and whatnot, but we were, we were really lucky that that particular site and parking lot has played a really good host to the mobile library since January. So we, we launched mobile library service in January twenty twenty-two. So again, as a stopgap for our efforts. So it stops every third, or it stops one Thursday every three weeks for about an hour and a half, I think, two to three PM. So here we are. In the last two months and responding to board direction to research options and opportunities for providing library service. We did reach out to Litton First Nation and had a really good meeting with their administrative administration and subsequently had a meeting with the woman who is heading up the Zenman Bird's Nest Project. So so what you see here in this particular slide is the rendering. That's from early in twenty twenty-five. I think it was tabled in February. And then just over to that right-hand side is the groundbreaking that took place in the spring. They're very excited. And in fact, with the advent of this Bird's Nest Project, it will see a number of things come under one roof of this family resource and learning center. So there will be sixty-seven licensed indigenous childcare spaces, gathering spaces, teaching kitchen, an indigenous library. And we were told that they really wanted their elders to play a significant role in terms of language preservation and, and teaching the young residents of, of the First Nation. Intergenerational space and then finally, some type of community coffee space, not a commercial enterprise, but instead something where it could be, you know, a community, but also a learning opportunity for, for younger folks living there as well. So as we talked about this opportunity and, you know, really trying to understand the Bird's Nest Project, we were told that it really doesn't take the place of, you know, having a proper public library. You know, it's four kilometers away from the Litton Village proper. And it was the woman heading up the Zenman Project who said that, you know, she's excited about the prospect of a public library. So clearly, we're talking about two, two different types of, of, of services, certainly within, you know, a geographic, say, five, five kilometer or so radius, but she was, she was excited to hear about, you know, the fact that we were beginning to, you know, undertake some research and, and, you know, that we would be bringing it back to the board for, for some thoughtful discussion. So I'm going to switch gears here and I'm going to talk about the Aberdeen Tiny Library. So bear with me because it's in the report. So you will know that, and all of you supported, you know, us moving from the pilot project that began in twenty twenty-three fall to ongoing library services up at the mall. So we're talking about three hundred and fifty-two square feet. Enormous success. Thanks to not only the dedication of our, our staff, but just that real pent-up interest in terms of, of that need for a library up in South, Southwest Kamloops. So giant success with that three hundred and fifty-two square feet. And together with that, we've actually got an additional fifty square feet that we lease as well for some, or some storage space. Aberdeen Tiny Library for us was the jumping off point for our RFID, radio frequency identification. And with that, we were able to then launch our holds locker. Enormously popular. So while we've moved to thirty-two hours of library operation in Aberdeen, people can pick up their holds, pulls from the holds locker at any time that the mall is open. As well, there's a book dispenser, so you know, if people come by, the library is closed, they're not going to go away empty-handed. So, you know, I think that for the regional library system, it really holds terrific opportunity because of its low operating costs. Very, very sustainable, small footprint. This is the very first lease that the library has had. So all of our other locations are owned by the TNRD. So our very first lease, lease location. And I think because of its sustainability in terms of costs, et cetera, that it could be, you know, a jumping off point and readily adapted for a community such as Litton. All right, so I have a couple of slides here. So twenty, February twenty twenty-five, the village of Litton also received confirmation of success and applying for funding through Infrastructure Canada's Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Program. And Litton will see that investment of more than twenty-five million towards the goal of having a community hub. So what you see here in this slide is the proposed site on Fraser Street in the village of Litton. That hub plan, and I'm certainly not the expert to be speaking to this, but but it is envisioned as an accessible, inclusive gathering space for not just the residents of Litton, but also for residents in the surrounding area. It may see such things as a, a pool, definitely a fire reservoir, festival and gathering place suitable for, for markets. Definitely a recreation space. Naturally, it will be, you know, very accessible. And, and last, pending TNRD approval to reestablish library services in, in Litton, it may also see a, a library under that same roof. So at the time of the writing of this, of the report and my creation of this presentation, the village of Litton was seeking proposals for the design work for the community hub project. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering at some point, Director O'Connor might be able to speak and provide us with an update. That would be super. And then finally, I just want to leave off that, again, emphasizing that Aberdeen Tiny Library, it's very cost-effective design, service model and use of shared space really holds promise for the creation of a library at the Litton Community Hub. I'm happy to take questions and comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Director O'Connor.
Thank you for that presentation, Judy. So just to update on the community hub, can you put the slide back up that showed the concept plan? So we did, we put out an RFP for an architecture firm and we have awarded that contract as of two weeks ago to a company called O4 Architecture. And they are going to be starting community engagement sessions very, very shortly. So on this plan that's up, up here, through the GICB program, it included three main components. One is the swimming pool, the outdoor swimming pool. It may have covers or, or shade or windbreaks, that sort of thing. It won't be an indoor pool. An outdoor covered area space for market, festivals, that sort of thing, like Judy mentioned, and a building. And the building will be, I think, the, through the Green and Inclusive Building Program, BuiltNet Zero. And all of this is one hundred percent funded, which is unheard of with the GICB program. Typically, it's a shared cost, so all of it will be covered, or yeah, the cost will be covered for the building itself and the pool and the outdoor space. Where the pool is located, this was the concept plan that we put in for the funding, but we're switching things around. The pool will go back in its original location because of archaeology costs, so that's limiting that. And the green space you see there with the circle, that's actually the Catholic Church property that we're working with to do a swap in properties so that we can use the entire space and not have to have that green space in the middle. So that's just an update on where we're at. So we're pretty excited that we're moving forward with the design and the construction of, of this project. I, I do have a question though for you, Judy. You had mentioned in, in the original proposal about grants and other opportunities that you'd look into. Did you come across any for the for services in Litton?
We haven't, we haven't explored that. Thank you for your, your, your question through the chair. However, once we're provided with direction, then we can start to kind of examine whether or not there may be any sort of grant funding. I think we do that with, with any, any project that we're undertaking and of course, are well supported through our, our grants area. So yeah, question mark, but it is part of that, that motion.
Anyone else? Director Thor?
I just want to take opportunity to thank staff for moving forward this motion I brought forward a couple of months ago. I appreciate the time that you've taken to look at the options. My major concern was that a physical library would not go back in the community. And to me, having a physical library back in the community irregardless And to me, having a physical library back in the community, irregardless of where it went, was a priority for all the residents of the area. So thank you very much for putting this forward, I appreciate it.
Through the chair, thank you for your comments, Director Thorpe.
And I just have a comment, I believe, Melissa, I'm not trying to pin you down, but I know that we did have a talk about three years ago regarding usage of the Litton Library. Now, I know that all of the library branches apart from the Aberdeen Tiny Library do have computers that members of the public, patrons can access. And I think we, we discussed that that was a good portion of what patrons of the Litton Library were using. And I think we certainly did see that in the graphic, you know, the, the physical things that got checked out from the library were not as high as at other gateway libraries, but people were going in there to make use of the computers for whatever reason. Now, the Aberdeen Tiny Library does not have computers available for the public, it's 352 square feet. We're proposing 500 square feet now, which is half what it was before. Sorry to be doing math on a Friday morning, but is there going to be space in there to allow for public computer usage, which does seem to have been an important component of the Litton Library?
Thank you for your question. I'll go ahead and answer, answer that, I'll start by answering it anyhow. That, we, we did look at that, so yeah, it's about 150 square feet larger than what we have at the Aberdeen Mall in terms of that. In terms of the go-forward for our spaces, we're looking at those common area spaces with terrific interest. You know, we, we would likely follow along in terms of the overall staffing model. So, you know, our gateways are 16 hours per week. We may be able to look at a service exterior, we could look at various technologies and so on, but, but really, you know, we want to really take a hard look at the space outside of, of the library as well and whether or not there's opportunities to look at, you know, tablets. Calgary Public, for example, they have a, a means by which with a library card, a person can actually borrow a tablet, you know, that they, you know, somebody could work outside of those 16 hours. Because with 16 hours, we're never going to be able to meet all the demands of the community. So hence this, you know, the Aberdeen Tiny Library with its technology innovation, with, with other, other libraries up ahead, it will probably look different. But to your point, Chair Roden, that, you know, computer use in those small communities is, is a vital resource and, and something that we do have to offer.
Thank you, I'm just thinking about with Ashcroft, I know, talking to the staff there, the library does get utilized sometimes by, by people bringing in their own, students bringing in their own laptops or or devices, often because they find a peace and quiet and even safety at the library that they might not be getting in other environments. So I, I just think it's important to keep that at the forefront, even if it's just a couple of computers in the library so that people know they're there. And I do like the idea of shared spaces, you know, having a washroom in, in common with the rest of the building, that obviously helps us. And would be able to have the holds locker and the book vending machine outside the library space, but within a secured environment as at Aberdeen Mall. So, I mean, I think that's an awesome option too, but, yeah, I just, I just think we need to, to keep the computer thing in, in, in mind, because I think that was an important thing for a lot of patrons there. No?
Chair Roden, just, computer literacy is, 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 is one of our key goals and something that we have to keep at top of mind, so thank you for raising that, and we'll definitely be looking at that.
I've got Director O'Connor and Director Smith.
Yeah, sorry, just a, just a comment. In the, the previous library, I, I can picture how big it was. I am having a hard time picturing half that size, size-wise. But I know we are, we are considering incorporating as much flex space, multi-use space as possible. So how much of that could be used by the library, I, I don't know, because we don't, we don't know anything at this time. But I, I think we just need to work together to make it work.
Director Smith?
Thank you, Chair. My question, I guess, would be for Director O'Connor. You mentioned that the pool is not going to go where it is in that drawing, that it's going to go, where is it on, in relation to, to this site plan that I'm looking at? The, like, the other drawing where it shows where the hub is going to go, where is, or does it even show on here?
Yeah, it'll be where the brown area is. The long brown stretch is Fourth Street, which is where the farmer's market used to be. The plan was then to put it on the property at the end, but the two will most likely switch depending on the Catholic Church property, which is the green space. But the pool will go where the brown, large brown area is.
So there is no pool area now, like, is this?
No, they took the pool out.
Okay.
Yeah, they took the pool out and filled it in.
Thank you.
So the brown space is where the pool was before?
Previous, yes.
Yes. Anyone else have any questions or comments? We do have a recommendation.
I'd like to move the recommendation, please.
Second by Director O'Connor, thank you very much, and we get another bite at the cherry for discussion. Anything suddenly occurred to someone? No? All right. All right, well, thank you very much for that presentation and look forward to exciting developments on this and other library fronts. Oh, sorry, yeah, I guess we should. Sure. Why not? So, so on the recommendation, all those in favor? Just, just to make it formal, anyone opposed? That is carried, thank you, all right. All right, and so next up, and now for something completely different. We have a report on Japanese beetles. So, there we go. Mr. Skrepnik, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, good morning, through to the chair and committee members. So I'm going to be turning it over quite promptly here to Ms. Hogan, who is much more, much more in her wheelhouse than mine. What I will say though, just to sort of set the context a bit, so Colleen is our invasive, or sorry, our integrated pest management supervisor. Now, that portfolio oversees our invasive plant management program, which is a, a service as old as the TNRD, and then as well as our mosquito control. So it does not cover off kind of the wide gamut of other invasive species. So when we're talking about aquatics, zebra mussels, things like that, and inclusive as well as these Japanese beetles. So this is not something we currently have a service for. Having said that, as Colleen's going to, going to expand on here, this is an issue that is now becoming quite real for our region. I think our directors from the City of Kamloops will have some familiarity with this. And there's been some developments as recently as last few weeks that Colleen's going to touch on in terms of what the response this is going to look like. So I will turn it over to Ms. Hogan.
Thanks, Kevin. So for those that aren't aware, Japanese beetle was confirmed in Kamloops last summer, and the response has been initiated by the federal government. So with this invasive species being present in the region, we want to share some basic information with you on the beetle, the response practices, and roles and responsibilities. So during the presentation, I'll share some basic information on the beetle, how it's typically monitored and managed. I also want to pre- preface this by stating I'm not the Japanese beetle expert, so if you have questions, I'll do the best I can to help you answer them. And most of the information from, for this presentation's been obtained from this guidebook for Japanese beetle, which was created by the Invasive Species Council of Metro Vancouver and personal communications with the Canadian Food Inspection Agency and staff members from the City of Kamloops. So the next few slides will provide you a quick overview on the beetle and how to identify it, where it thrives, how it moves, and why we should be concerned. So the Japanese beetle originates from the mainland of Japan and was unintentionally introduced into North America in 1916. Today, the eastern United States and eastern Canada are considered partially or generally infested with the beetle. In 2017, the beetle was first detected in Vancouver, and insects have dispersed to a variety of areas in the lower mainland since then. And in 2024, the beetle was first detected in Kamloops. So even though the beetle's been detected in B.C., it's still considered to be pest-free as it's not yet to be considered established in the province, and there is an eradication response underway by the federal government. Should the beetle become much more widespread where eradication isn't feasible, then the status for B.C. might change. So in Canada, the Japanese beetle is regulated under the Plant Protection Act and Regulations, which is administered by the Canadian Food Inspection Agency. So there are a few key characteristics for both larva and adult, for both larva and adult beetle to help you identify it. The adults have a metallic green head and thorax, metallic copper brown wings, and six tufts of white hair along the sides of its abdomen. And I like to, to call him the fancy pants and the tuxedo going out for the day. So it's really those white tufts that can really distinguish this beetle from others. The larva has a C-shaped abdomen, cream-colored body, yellow brown head with six prominent legs. The way you can identify the larva is through the raster pattern, and that's the pattern created by the fine hairs on their tail end. But that's only visible under microscope and typically takes an entomologist to figure that out. So turf grass is the most frequent host plant of Japanese beetle larva. Brown spongy patches in turf is an indicator that the beetle larva might be present. As you can see on the photo there, you see that brown patch in the center. The roots of other plants may be targeted as well. The beetle may also be found in ornamental gardens, fruit and vegetable gardens, nurseries, orchards, and agricultural crops. So you can see the beetle here is foraging on a rose plant. So Japanese beetle has a few ways that it can get around. It can move naturally through flight. The beetle can typically fly between three and five kilometers when it's searching for food. If there's wind to facilitate their movement, they can fly as far as eight kilometers. It can also be transported to different locations and soil and plants that are contaminated with the adults and larva, and they're also known to hitch a ride on your vehicles and personal belongings. So this photo depicts the Japanese beetle life cycle. So in August and July, females deposit up to 60 eggs into the soil. Two weeks later, the larva will develop. As the temperature gets colder in the fall and winter, the larva will dig deeper into the soil to avoid freezing. So they can dig typically between five and 30 centimeters into the soil. They continue to feed on grassroots throughout the winter as the temperatures allow. They continue to grow in the soil until June and July, when they pupate and emerge as adults. Adult beetles have a really short window to actively mate and feed on fruit, flowers, and foliage of a variety of different plants. So in Canada, the flight period typically occurs between June 15th to October 15th, or when temperatures are above 21 degrees Celsius. So what's the big deal about the beetle? It has direct impacts on desirable plant species during its larval and adult stages. During the larval stage, it feeds on the roots of plants. This impacts the ability to uptake nutrients and decreases the plant's overall integrity. During the adult stage, it eats leaf tissue, flower buds, fruits, impacting plant physiology and reproduction. So the photo on the right shows the beetles eating the leaves of a plant, resulting in skeletalization of the leaf. The beetle can also cause severe damage to nurseries, farms, golf courses, gardens, and parks, resulting in economic losses and for the horticultural and agricultural industries. So in an economic analysis paper written by, written by the B.C. Ministry of Agriculture in 2017, it was estimated that the potential crop damage caused by the beetle would cost producers 14.5 million, excluding turf grass losses. In addition to direct crop damage, establishment of the beetle in the province will threaten live plant exports to the U.S., which had a value of $90 million in 2016. And the Western Turf Grass Association also did an economic risk assessment and said the impacts to the North American turf producers is estimated to be about 74 million dollars. So in addition to lost revenue for producers, there's also control costs to consider as well. So that concludes a short bio session on Japanese beetle, but now I want to share some information on how the beetle's being monitored and managed in B.C. So surveillance of the Japanese beetle is conducted by the Canadian Food Inspection Agency. They have a team based in Vancouver that carries out inspections throughout the province. So CFIA does have limited capacity in terms of staff, equipment, and budget to carry out province-wide surveillance. So right now, they're focusing surveillance efforts in areas where the Japanese beetle's been detected. So that includes the lower mainland and Kamloops. Surveillance is not taking place in any other TNRD member municipalities other than Kamloops due to the limited resources and capacity. However, CFIA did mention there's opportunity to partner with them if local governments or invasive species organizations want to set up to, want to set, want to set up traps and monitor them. So if anybody's interested, I can connect them with the CFIA representative that I'm working with. So all of CFIA's surveillance efforts take place during the flight season, which again is June 15th to October 15th. The map on the slide shows the 2021 Japanese beetle trapping locations in the lower mainland, Sunshine Coast and Sea to Sky Highway corridors. A total of 2,790 traps were placed in these populated areas. They'll typically start setting the traps where the beetle's been confirmed, and they work their way out in a grid system. So this year, for Kamloops, surveillance and trapping will expand from where the beetles were detected, which was near Exhibition Park down by the river. So under the authority of the Federal Plant Protection Act and Regulations, the CFIA enforces movement restrictions by establishing regulated areas as well. So when establishing these boundaries, they take into consideration the location of all Japanese beetles in the area in addition to the geography of the area, impacts to stakeholders, potential for spread, and the ease of communication to members of the public. The CFIA has released the formal restricted area for this year, which is indicated in the photo. You can see it's, it's quite extensive and covers almost half of the downtown corridor. So any plants or soil-related matter attached to Japanese beetle-regulated articles are restricted as there are higher risks for movement of the beetle, egg, larva, pupa, or adults. All regulated articles need a CFIA movement certificate before they can move outside of the regulated area. So examples of regulated articles include turf, sod, ornamental grasses, garden and house plants, bulbs, trees, and shrubs. Non-regulated articles would include things like clippings, cuttings, trimmings, chipped material, gravel or aggregate that is free of soil, fresh fruits and vegetables for consumption. These items can be moved in and out of the restricted area without a movement certificate. I think I skipped a slide here, I'll go back here. My goodness. Using the wrong clicker, sorry, guys. Okay, we did that. So we'll go here. So a CFIA-issued movement certificate is a document required year-round to move regulated articles out of the Japanese regulated area. When issued, a movement certificate will list a set of conditions that must be followed to mitigate the risk of spreading the beetle from the regulated area to a press-free area. The graphic here shows that restricted articles into regulated areas and within the regulated area without a certificate. However, you want to move a restricted article out of the regulated area, that's when you would require, require the certificate. Okay, so the B.C. Ministry of Agriculture and Foods coordinates the treatment of the beetle on private and public lands, and they can issue orders to treat. The orders state the product to use along with where and when to apply it. The product typically used in Japanese beetle, Japanese beetle response is acelaphrin, which targets root-eating grubs. Outside of the beetle treatment zones, landowners may use any registered product for treatment of Japanese beetle at their own cost. Beetlegon is a commercially available product that controls adults. However, this typically isn't used in a provincial response. So manual and mechanical control are not effective as they're time-consuming and may further destroy turf. Trapping's not effective as it only traps adults and doesn't control the larva. And finally, there are no current biological controls approved for management of the beetle. So practitioners and members of the public play an important role in preventing the unintentional human-assisted spread of the beetle and should consider the following best management practices. So we should be leaving soil and plant waste on site, cleaning all soil from boots, clothing, equipment, tools, including lawn mowers, rigs, shovels, trimmers, wheelbarrows, brooms, before going to another site or leaving the regulated area. before going to another site or leaving the regulated area. Airing and power raking tools present a significant risk for carrying the beetle at various life stages. So avoid using equipment or boring equipment from people within the regulated area as much as possible. Check for hitchhikers on clothing, footwear, tools, and equipment and vehicles. The one example C F I A gave me was it traveling through picnic blankets in Vancouver. So if you get up with your picnic blanket, give it a quick shake. Make sure there's nothing on it when you leave. And then also ensuring contaminated loads have been adequately covered, tarped, to prevent Japanese beetle from flying out during transport. Yeah, so from June fifteenth to October fifteenth, make sure if you're disposing of any garden plants that you shake them, remove of any adult beetles before you dispose of them. So residents should be encouraged to become familiar with the Japanese beetle's characteristics and report beetles suspected feeding damage and missing or damaged surveillance traps to the C F I A. That's their contact information on the screen there. So in terms of response, many players are affected by Japanese beetle. And a collaborative response is required from federal, provincial, and municipal governments, along with industry and other stakeholders. So a Japanese beetle steering committee oversees the response, which entails the work of three subcommittees. There's a treatment committee, movement control committee, and communications subcommittee. These committees collaborate with each other and provide information for interested organizations and to the public. So typically, only impacted organizations are invited to participate in these committees. Invited members typically include the Canadian Food Inspection Agency, Ministry of Agriculture and Foods, municipal governments, the B C Land and Nursery Association, and a project facilitator, which has been the Invasive Species Council of B C. So in terms of regional management, the city of Kamloops is part of the multi-agency response and was mandated in February by the province to treat the infested area in May of this year. The city of Kamloops coordinated treatments and the infested areas were treated in May using a cellophrine. The city is going to be coordinating treatment annually until there are no beetles found for at least two years. The city has also developed a disposal plan for all regulated articles. Regulated articles need to be disposed of at the Mission Flats landfill where materials will undergo deep burial. The city has also instructed residents within regulated area to continue to use their compost bins for yard waste with no restrictions. But as a precaution, they have designated trucks to service the restricted area to ensure material isn't mixed with waste from outside the regulated area. Within the T N R D, we have spoken with our solid waste department, and they will be sharing information with nearby T N R D solid waste facilities such as Nuttsford and Heffley Creek to train their site operators and refuse any regulated articles being brought into those facilities. And they'll redirect people to the Mission Flats landfill. Okay, so we'll move on to the T N R D's role. The T N R D is limited right now in how we can support other invasive species issues in the region other than terrestrial plants. So as Kevin alluded, we are strictly focused on terrestrial invasive plants. So with that, we have the Thompson Nicola Invasive Plant Management Committee, where we do management coordination, education, and outreach throughout the region on invasive plants. Just so you're aware, most regions of the province have dedicated invasive species organizations who help coordinate and manage and deliver education and outreach on invasive plants in addition to other invasive species that the province is facing. So some examples include invasive mussels, whirling disease, feral pigs, and more. So for now, we're happy to assist with communicating key messages to members of the municipality and our residents on Japanese beetle. However, anything beyond that might involve further discussion about the scope of our program. So that's all I had for Japanese beetle and happy to try and answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. Anyone thinking this looks familiar? They are a species of scarab beetle, so you have seen them in any movie about the mummy. Where they are invariably bad news, so just saying. Anyone have any questions or comments? Director Sal?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that presentation. I'm just wondering, how does Japan, are they controlled in Japan? And how do they do it? And are we kind of following what they do? And is there natural predators?
So they do have natural predators there because that's their homeland. So they would have natural predators that would keep the populations balanced. And that's where biocontrol comes into play in our area. But there's no, not that I'm aware of, any research being done right now for any biological controls for Japanese beetle. So that would mean they would, it's usually the C F I A-led, they research the predators in the native origin of the beetle. And then they do a whole bunch of testing on that to see if it's safe to bring it into Canada because they really want to ensure there's no non-target effects. So usually it takes ten to twenty years to have that research and approval done. So it's a little ways out if they've even started it. I'm not sure.
And sorry, second question. More so for asking for my wife, she shops a lot at Art Nap. I wonder, I don't think Art Nap, that kind of north Kamloops area isn't part of the controlled area yet, eh? No. And just wondering for future, if, you know, knock on wood, it does spread to those areas. Does the federal government have economic support for businesses? Say if it affects Art Nap, I would imagine that would have a pretty big impact on their business not being able to sell products to clear north Thompson.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the financial supports available for that. Yeah, sorry. Can't answer that.
Director Morris?
Thank you, Bugs. Just two questions then. One is specifically to, I'm going to isolate it to area P and Schuettrop Road, is the Japanese beetle itself. Where do we have any mapping that identifies where the highest infestation may or is already occurring? So that would be one of the first things that I would like to have a sense of because sadly, I think I've seen quite a few of them in my own little pasture. So I would be interested first if you can share that presentation with us if needs be. And then secondly, thoughts on where is it specific to some of the benchlands? For example, along that Schuettrop Road, South Thompson corridor? And then I'll have a second question.
Yeah, we did ask C F I A about how, if they do any predictive modeling for movement. And they said it's typically based on preferred habitat type. So anywhere where there essentially is a lot of turf. So maybe River Shore Golf Course might be. Is it River Shore out there? Yeah, might be an area where the beetle might establish. So it's typically turf grass areas, which you find in, yeah. Yeah, so if I was to suspect where it would go, that's where my eyes would go, was to the golf course. Yeah, and then it could spread from there, right, into people's gardens on their plants and stuff, but yeah.
And I'll save my second question because it's about a different invasive and let others go on right now. Thank you.
Director O'Connor?
Thank you. I'm just curious about the size, and I'm not sure whether you mentioned it or not. I did see a diagram that said actual size, but I don't think it's this big.
See where it is? So, yeah, I would say if I had to hazard a guess, it's probably the size of your thumbnail.
Thank you.
Director Karpuk?
Thank you, Chair. I think many of us have probably seen similar beetles if you're a bit of a outdoors person. And unlike gardening and myself, we see other types of grubs that live on roots that are not the same as this and not to be confused with that. We have lots of natural beetles that exist in our yard. This one is an unwanted guest, to say the least. But I think it's really key that those tufts are really definitive on this beetle. If you have one, I believe, when I looked it up, they're about eight to twelve millimeters, so less than a centimeter in size. They're not a huge beetle. I think for what we've done here at the city, what our staff have done, and probably in partnership with our staff here at the T N R D, is an educational campaign. And I think we just need to make sure the word gets out to more and more people to have that vigilance because if we can catch it before it gets a big infestation, so to speak. I think from what we were presented, there were seventeen beetles that were seen in Exhibition Park or something to that number. Not huge numbers, but enough to start something. I guess one of my questions actually is, in the context of education and people and how we want to do this, I'm not sure, given this is turf grass, we have a lot of tournaments in the city of Kamloops, outlying areas that come to town. If you want to stop it from getting to your town, make sure when you come and play on our grass that you clean your shoes and your cleats before you go back to your community would probably be words of wisdom. But if, could indulge, and I know that Director Morris and I have talked a little bit about this, and you'd mentioned this with CEO Hildebrand yesterday. Just curious if we could switch subject just slightly to another invasive species that seems to be ignored here, but is now being dealt with elsewhere. So Manager Skrapnik, maybe you can bring up your thoughts on the Russian olives and others like the, what do they call it? The Tree of Heaven. The R D C O has been following the city of Cologne's lead on Siberian elm, Russian olives. Perhaps you can address this in the context of, one, they're really bad, but specifically the Russian olives, as many of us have seen throughout area, the lower valley bottoms, the corridors along riverbanks and things like that. Ducks Unlimited have raised a flag up that we're losing very critical ecosystem habitat around our wetlands because of the invasiveness of these trees. They're just prolific producers of seeds. They're one of those hardwoods that sucker and you can whack them down and bulldoze them and they'll come right back up. So I'm just curious what our thoughts are on that invasive species that we've had this discussion here today. How are we going forward to do with that? Because along the other aspects, the fire smart component of Russian olives, they are like a Roman candle in the middle of summer because of the amount of terpenes and other really, really high VOCs that they produce. So I'm just curious if staff could maybe address that. I don't want to put you on the spot. Do we have any thoughts towards where that's going within our management strategies?
So trees are the new hot topic of management. Like you said, there's Siberian elm, Tree of Heaven, Russian olive. The problem that we're hearing from the province is the cost associated with managing them. So as you can imagine, trying to take down the mature trees is very expensive. And there's limited contractors available to do that type of work. So that's one thing. So we are trying to advocate for more funds for invasive plant management, including starting to manage trees. But it's still, nothing has come to fruition yet in terms of that.
So supplemental to that, I'm wondering if there might be a creative solution here. And I'm going to look to Manager Skrapnik with his background with B C Wildfire. And B C Wildfire has community grants for fire smarting. And given that many of these areas are on an interface, whether we might be one of creatively advocating to the province, either their staffing at the upcoming E B C M or at a ministerial level, to see if we couldn't qualify for some of these actions to be qualified under that grant process that they use for other smaller projects. So I don't know if that's something you're familiar with, but I know Mike Aldridge used to be the one in charge at B C Wildfire for handing out those hundred and fifty thousand dollar grants to community organizations to address fire smart issues. But I'm looking at the prolific growth as the Russian olives are now up the corridor, the number one highway. They're no longer just on the riverbanks and along our C P and C N corridors. They are migrating as they expect prolifically across our regions. And the flags are going up right across the whole of the Okanagan and throughout the province. They are a hot topic, but I'm wondering if we can't come up with a creative solution and push that agenda at a higher level. Just my thoughts.
Chair, through to Director Karpuk. Certainly, yeah, I think that's an interesting idea. The focus insofar from the fire smart side has largely been on cedars, junipers to a lesser degree. And there have been, I think they've gotten it aligned now, but we had seen some issues over the past few years where, you know, you had the Fire Smart Program advocating for certain plants and shrubs that weren't necessarily totally in line with what we were looking for from an invasive species perspective. But it seems like that has kind of gotten on track. But yeah, in terms of the Russian olive, it's not one that I have kind of heard discussed broadly from the fire smart perspective. But you're absolutely right in terms of like the explosive nature of the fire behavior that results from one of those igniting. So yeah, that's certainly something I can take away and myself and Mr. Vera can touch base with the Fire Smart Team as well.
I think, if I may, I know we've had some experience with the Tree of Heaven, fondly nicknamed the Tree of Hell in Ashcroft. And we did a program a number of years ago encouraging residents who either knew or suspected they had these in their yards to contact the village and we would send someone from Public Works. And one of the things that we knew going in, we told them that we would deal with it for them because they have to be dealt with in a very specific way. Because if you just go in and cut them down and drag them to the landfill, you are just scattering trailing seeds behind you as you go and creating lots more little trees of heaven. So they have to be not only cut down or removed, but disposed of in a safe way. And so I think that's another hazard to responding to the scourge of these trees that are invasive is because you can't just go and chop them down and chip them up. You have to be very careful. And of course, the more steps, the more expensive the process is. Anyone else have any thoughts on these invasives? The Siberian elms do very well around Ashcroft. They lack of water, rocky sandy soil, they love it. So, and a lot of them that are growing there are growing in pieces of wasteland. They've just grown up and, yeah, they do their thing. Director Hutton?
Colleen, I like these invasive plants that some of these nurseries and landscapers like to sell that are invasive and at our invasive plants meetings, we're writing letters to them saying you shouldn't be selling that because, and all the reasons why, and some listen, some don't. Are these trees that you're talking about also sold at landscapers and that basically counteracting what we're trying to do here? Or is it just the ones that we talk about at our invasive plants meeting?
These trees are sold as horticultural. That's how they're typically introduced. Someone plants them in their property and then they expand from there. So yeah, like you said, we do do outreach with the nurseries in our area. But there's a lot of hesitation because they're scared of losing profit. But there are some that are willing to modify their stock. But we've been told that it's not as easy as just pulling something off the shelf, that it takes a few years for them to kind of weed it out of their stock. So yeah, there is work being done with them. And unfortunately, there's no legislation saying that they can't sell it. So it's really down to doing education and outreach with these groups.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments on invasives? All right, thank you very much. All right, and that is the end of our agenda. Just reminding everyone that there will be a pizza lunch served in here at eleven forty-five. And then we have our regional hospital district meeting here at twelve thirty. So pizza will be arriving imminently. Don't go away. And we are adjourned. See you all back here at twelve thirty. Oops, God.
One quick comment, if I may. This will be a bit of a surprise to Judy, but there will be a cake arriving as well. So please enjoy cake with your pizza.
As you speak, as you speak, it is here. The cake has arrived.